Which, I don't know that this really describes what either of them do. So maybe we need an auto auction section in this. And then where do we want to put that? I mean, do we want, do we want that kind of thing in the rural? Or the residential? And again, this wouldn't affect Copart or BHT at this point. But it's something we need to think about if these kinds of things are coming into town. We have nothing on adult entertainment. So, you know. Would one come to Warren? I don't know. Maybe, maybe not, but it might be classed as a bar. But then again, or maybe a restaurant. But there is no slot in here for just a bar. There are, there is a slot in here for a restaurant. I don't know where that is. Restaurant, this one here. So this is a restaurant, right? But it really doesn't say anything about, you know, what a bar really is, which is ju- like Glenda's, right? They, they serve alcohol, they don't serve food. So, you know, wha- what do we want to do with that? Do we want a bar in the rural? I don't know. But something to think about it. And then, I think specifically, putting adult entertainment in the commercial district is probably a pretty good idea. I don't know that these blocks can be N across the board. Like, I'm not sure that we can say no at all to something like adult entertainment. Although Charlestown does have some spots, and so does Westbrook Field in their zoning chart, usage chart, where there are no's across the board. I don't know if that's constitutional. So, we can try it, but we might get challenged on it, so.
That could be a question for Jeff.
Yeah. I think I know what the answer is, but I did see it in other towns and I was like, well, okay.
So, can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, the chart that we're looking at right now, you know, the, all of the columns with each of the different zones?
Yeah.
We've added zones that aren't included on here.
What's?
So, it says rural, residential.
Village and commercial. And then, this is the, oh, for God's sakes, what is it?
Mill District?
Yeah, Mill.
The Mill District, but does that also include Callahan property that has its own?
No, hold on a second. M D O D is the major development overlay district, which is Callahan's property.
So it doesn't include the Mill District?
The Mill District isn't on here.
Is there something else too? I thought there was another one that was missing, but. So this whole chart needs to be updated. And then elements within the text of the bylaw needs to show up in the chart, because the chart hasn't been updated completely. And I noticed that last year when I was going through it, but I'm not writing the whole bylaw at that point. But it is kind of sloppy.
So what were you saying about the bylaws in the, in the chart?
Well, the chart, the, the text in the bylaw doesn't always reflect. There have been changes in the bylaw, but it doesn't necessarily always, it's not always reflected in this chart.
Okay.
Let's say there's a certain kind of business or certain something, it doesn't always reflect in here, like no, 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 yes. They've changed it to be no, yes, yes, yes.
So the chart needs to be updated to reflect what's in the language.
Thank you, yes. I did say that.
Well, okay, it seems to me that in the bylaw, you shouldn't even bother with the districts that it's allowed in, because you go back to the zoning chart then. And that would, and then they would never get out of sync. You know what I mean? Like, if you do a new, like, if we do this wind turbine bylaw, we don't say where it goes in the bylaw, but in the chart, we say where it goes.
We did say in the solar bylaw, we specifically said it was a thing.
Yeah. And then they can get out of sync and then, you know, I don't know what happens then, that's a bad thing. Right? Yeah. That's a lawyer loophole.
Well, I guess you go, go with the latest date, but one showed up.
Oh, yeah.
But the best question is not to have that question come up.
Right. I don't know, any questions on that?
No, you're right, it needs to be updated. I mean, this probably should be gone through on some sort of regular basis too. I mean, every couple of years, whatever, just to make sure it's in sync with what's happening.
Yeah. I have no idea if this thing is available and like, somebody must have put this in a document somewhere.
Oh, yeah, I have it.
You do?
Yeah.
Like in a Word document?
Well, yes, I have the whole thing, but Nancy Lowell is the keeper of it. So she would have the latest and the greatest version of it.
Okay.
What happens is that she's the one who updates it. So if you have changes, you would give it to her and she would insert it unless you're doing the whole document. You know what I'm saying?
Right, well, if we're having that.
For instance, when we did the solar bylaw, we just updated our section and we gave it to Nancy as tidy as possible and formatted. And then she would take the final one and turn it into this, to make sure that it matched all the format.
So, one thing I would ask, since we're gonna add another, the, the Mills zone to this. What does it mean when there's nothing in this column, in this column?
That it, so far that there's no bylaw that affected it? Or there's nothing in the bylaw, or somebody just didn't bother going through and doing anything with it?
Okay.
Could mean any number of things.
But I mean, i- is that implicitly like a buy right situation?
No, I think that literally you just need to read the bylaw and see where, what sections apply. And then you make a decision on whether it applies or not.
Okay. Seems like it would be better to fill these in, again.
Yes, that's what I mean, yes.
Eliminate the ambiguity of having all these blanks and somebody thinking, well, you know, I can put whatever I want in that area. Okay. Anything else on that? It's gonna be a big nut to crack too. All right, so next on the list, I guess, would be. And this stuff is, is not bylaw related, but it's planning board related. You know, this is, um, so one thing we don't have right now is a good list of things that we want people to submit. Right? You know, a hard list saying, this is what you need.
Well, we do have the, the site plan, what are they?
Yeah, we do.
Yeah.
But I think we were looking to make it more specific. And then give the applicant something that they can basically check off and, um.
So really a checklist.
Yeah, yeah. So I'm gonna share a draft, so this is also a work in progress.
Checklist should probably be interdepartmental too. So they should go through conservation, get their checks, building inspector, all, all the appropriate offices to make sure that, you know, we're covering everybody.
Good idea.
Although you can't make it a requirement, it's just a, a nice reminder.
Why couldn't we make it a requirement?
Well, it, it is required on some, but you, you, the planning board cannot make, um, make an applicant go before conservation and vice versa, although people do that at their own peril. And you know what I'm saying? You can't say, I won't give you a permit if you don't do this, because you just can't do that.
Joyce?
Yes.
I, I think you're right the way you're saying that, but it's the building code that really can't. Usually the building, the town makes you, in order to get a building permit, they, you know, make you go to all the inner office departments before you can get your building permit usually. And that's what you can't do, because the building code is clear. It's like a separate code and the building code says you don't have to do all that. But as far as the planning board for, for the, for their permit requirements, I think they can make you go, you know, for their own requirements, but it's just the building code that they, they can't, you know, the building inspector can't say, well, you have to go through all these other departments before I'll give you a building permit. But I don't, I'm not sure if the planning board can or cannot do it.
Ah, okay.
Well, I, you know, I would say we stick with our domain then. Right? I mean, we know what we want from an applicant and.
Right.
And, and they, they should, we can say, you better, you know, you gotta go to conservation and if they don't do it, well, then I guess they suffer the consequences, right?
Well, yeah, they work at their own peril at that point, right?
Well, there's a lot of situations, you know, on a large piece of property where you would want confirmation from a professional. Whether it's comfort, it would be not Conservation Commission, because we're just volunteers, but Conservation Commission's peer reviewer to say, yes, this large fifty acre and ninety, a hundred acre piece of property has been delineated appropriately and therefore the project is not on wetlands. So, I mean, I can see why the planning board would want to confirm that, because you want to make sure that the project is cited appropriately. But it's really, that would be Conservation's job, so that would just be a good to know for you? I don't know, I mean, I don't know what you can require, I guess. I didn't think that you could.
Well, I don't know, maybe we can require that you go to conservation and come back with some sort of determination, right? I mean, you may say you're fine, or you may say, well, you have to do these couple of things.
Sure.
That was my thinking, is just making sure that they're actually going to these departments and to like conservation. You know, because a lot of times, unless, like, we, we talk pretty well with each other. But sometimes we're, we're just in the moment and looking at it, and it'd be nice to have a document saying, okay, like, like you said, Rich, a checklist, to make sure that they went through all these things. And conservation's a big one. You know, we want to make sure that we're not, and they're saying, yes, you know, you're all set, good, you know, you could build there. And conservation turns around and says, no, what are you doing nitwits? You're getting into our jurisdiction now.
So this is just for special permits you're talking?
Yes.
Yeah, site, site plan and special permits kind of go together, so.
Yeah. I mean, the only issue, I mean, I, I, I hear what you're trying to say, David, and it makes a lot of sense. The only, the only question is, the stormwater you guys have, right? And so if they come to us with one, and they say they're gonna stay out and all this stuff. And, and we say, yep, you're good, and we sign it, then they go to you. And then you guys, for some reason, your peer review company says, well, you know, their stormwater is no good. They gotta enlarge it, or they gotta do, and then they get back into the wetlands, then they gotta come back to us. But I guess at that point, you'd already have them in front of you and you could make sure they came back to us at that point or something. I don't, I, there's some, there's always seem, gonna seem to be some overlap on certain projects, I guess. Where, like that.
Well, I'd rather have overlap than. You know, I just don't want anybody slipping through. You know, there's, we check the taxes, making sure, because our bylaws say we can't approve a permit. That's, you know, when they're behind on taxes.
Absolutely, we should all have, every, every board should have a copy of who's delinquent.
And, and, and we should be making sure of that. And whether it's us checking the checklist and saying, yep, or the tax collector saying, nope, they're good. As part of our special permit package. You know, liens, things like that, there's a lot of good things on this that Rich has up. I'd just like to make sure that, you know, the other departments are being included in this. Not us overruling them and saying, you have to do this. But more as working together to make sure people aren't falling through the cracks.
Well, plus this lets them know, for example, that they got to go to the tax collector and make sure, you know, if there's somebody coming in from the outside, they gotta go to the tax collector and make sure there's no liens. You know, they gotta deal with chat for sixty-one or, you know, whatever. And so, the idea behind this checklist is you've got, there's gonna be a few more items on here when it's done. But you've got all this stuff to go through, right? If it doesn't apply, you know, like number five, building elevations, if it doesn't apply, then you tick off the waiver box and say, you know, okay, this doesn't apply to me, you know? And just give a reason. So either you give the document or you give a reason. So then we know that we have all the bases covered.
All right, so someone comes in and they, they'd be the one to check waiver?
Yeah, this is for the applicant.
Okay.
Um, I also, I forgot who I talked to, but we cannot make the town clerk or anybody else verify this list against what they're submitting, because that's not her job. So, her, her job can be, you know, to take the packet and maybe just verify everything got checked off. That's probably fine, but it's not, she's not a planning board person, so she can't go through, you know, the twenty things that we're gonna have here and say, oh, yeah, you're, you know, your cut and fill is all wrong. So, you know, she can't do that. But she can just do a basic verify and say, okay. This is okay. Any questions or comments on this?
I, I was wondering if he could elaborate on that, maybe if he was on, if he could talk.
What was this?
John Fijil, um, put something in chat.
Here, I'll unmute, sorry.
See if he could talk.
You should be unmuted.
John, you there?
Hold on a minute. I got you.
Can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Definitely can hear you.
I'm, I'm just saying, the, all these conditions that you're, you're trying to execute before the actual permit is granted would end up costing the person that wants to develop a piece of land a lot of money. And then have you guys shut them down in the end. I think the permit process the way it is, is okay. And then you, and you elaborate on the conditions that you want met prior to the beginning of construction or anything like that. For someone to spend money on a traffic study, say, for example, or a stormwater analysis or, or anything like that, could get very costly. Because the engineering process and everything, all the steps you have to take to do that, and this is all the stuff that you want before an application is, is submitted, is that what you're saying? You want all this stuff done before you submit an application? I mean, and I don't see how they do that.
Not before, but with, if you're gonna do, if you're gonna apply, this is what we want, so.
Understood, but if you, if you deny the permit, this is all wasted money. You do understand where I'm coming from, if I want to develop some property, I did all this study, you guys just deny the, the permit for whatever reason. It, it could be kind of expensive. What would be the, the, what would be the incentive for someone to come into town if they have to do all this prior and then they shut down in, in the end? What, what would be the incentive for someone to come to town to develop anything? Am I misunderstanding something?
I, I, I think so. I was gonna say that this, when, when an applicant, I'm just gonna say a solar project, John.
Yeah.
Come to town and when they submit the project, we, they need to show that they've, they've done test pits and they set up the site and so they have a stormwater plan in place. You know, they're gonna show their basins and how stormwater is going to work and flow and, you know, pre and post. And all of that is done so the planning board can make a decision on the project. So, it, it is pretty standard practice for, for that.
For a solar budget. I'd just like to say that the solar guys are guaranteed they had their project up until then. Everything we dealt with, they were guaranteed, where other projects, it's a crap shoot. So, I mean, stormwater, stormwater can always be designed, no matter what. You know what I mean? It can be designed at any point, you know, that we know. I, I understand what John's saying from a developer's standpoint. You know, we, I, I think we got, we got in the solar mindset, because we got so much barrage by solar guys and, and it's a whole diff, you know. But the small guy who wants to build a little project, they don't have hundreds of thousands of dollars that they're, you know, to, to spend a bunch of stuff to take the risk to be turned down, you know what I mean? If they, if they know, then they're gonna get it, you know, then they would absolutely do it. But just to, I understand completely that the other side of the story too. You know, if you, you, nope, so it's, it would inhibit anybody from even wanting to do anything when they, you know, to put up that kind of money. If they knew, you know, it, I, I don't think you need finalized plans at, at, at this point, for sure. I mean, you need conceptual plans and things like that to see if it's gonna be suitable for what the town wants. If the town says, yeah, we like it, then we can move ahead. And then you, then you get, you know, then, then they design final plans. You know, it's a cra- it's, I think, you know, the, the solar guys were like a different animal compared to anything else. And we haven't had anything else but solar, and that's the problem. Everybody's, you know, that's all we've ever been dealing with in the last five years.
But why would you, why would, why would you behave differently with solar than you would with another company? I'm just gonna ask these questions and don't interrupt until I'm done. And then, and then, what is a small, what size company would you say could show up with a full set of plans? I mean, if they want to build a project, wouldn't it just, wouldn't you just show up and with a, with a broad?
No, what I'm saying was, solar was guaranteed. They were gonna get that project, so they weren't wasting their money.
I heard that.
So they're ready to do it, but you can't dismiss that. You know what I mean? If you're guaranteed that you're gonna be able to do this project, then yeah, you should expect them to come in with a finalized set of plans. But if it's gonna, if you're, if it's a fifty fifty chance, whether you're gonna allow this guy to do this or not, it's, it's a, it's a pretty tall order to say, we want finalized plans, when we, when they can't give you finalized plans. Because when you say that, your peer review guy's gonna get to go through it and then change their plans. And then make them re, and pay again to have it redesigned again, you know what I mean? It's like a double whammy.
Okay, no. I, I, I mean, the thing is that if, if, if you show up with a set of plans that are a piece of shit, as in like what the solar companies generally have given us, half-baked, you know, crayon drawings of, you know, oversimplified set of plans. The, the, a good peer reviewer would have laid waste to them, because they didn't do their job. But if they showed up and they crossed their Ts and they, and they followed the rules of stormwater, let's say, then no reason to say no and nobody would have to redesign their project.
But stormwater, but what I'm getting at is, you're discounting the fact that solar guys were guaranteed that this project was going in. They had no risk. It was, there was not getting turned down, if, if, right? So.
I, okay, you said that, okay, so I'm just gonna stop that, because you're repeating yourself again. But I am gonna say, is what point?
So here's the difference.
Or what point would you suggest?
Wait, wait, let me finish my side. Let me finish my side. A solar guy is guaranteed, they brought crap plans, there's no doubt about it. And they fought tooth and nail, they wouldn't even change them. They, they said, no, this is it, and they wouldn't change it, and they were given their per, project. Now, flip it to the other side. I'm a guy coming in to build a junkyard, like we got in front of us now. It's gonna be, um, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's not guaranteed, it's a fifty fifty chance, so.
So, what, at what point?
So wait, let me finish, let me fini- let me finish.
Oh, I know, but you just.
Let me finish, no, let, you finish, let me finish. So, I don't disagree that you should bring in a set of, of representative plans of what the project's gonna be. Blueprints, elevations, things like that, so people can see what the project's gonna be. But to demand that they spend twenty-five thousand dollars or more for do, to do stormwater, when they have no idea whether they're gonna get it, it's a little crazy, when the stormwater can always be designed. If their, if their conceptuals are brought to them and, and, and the town says, yep, this looks like a good plan, like something Warren wants, and we're gonna approve it. Okay, now you gotta design a stormwater plan. Then they'll spend the money, design a stormwater plan, do a good one, so that it's not gonna get changed under peer review. And, and everything's a, 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 agreed. But I think requiring stormwater, complete stormwater plans on every project's a little bit excessive, because it can always be done, anybody can do stormwater at any time.
Okay, so let me ask you.
The stormwater shouldn't make or break a project, you know what I mean? Because it can be done.
At this, at, at what point are you saying, so you, you want the planning board to make a decision on limited information?
Well, it's not limited.
Hold it, hold it, hold it. Limited information, and then based on that, at what point should the planning board be making a decision? And will they come before the planning board again with the completed stormwater after?
Define your, your definition of limited.
The, the limited is, okay, so like in this situation right now, where people are freaking out about the possible contamination of water, right? So one of the things that the applicant can do is present a clear case that this is not going to be the problem, because A, B, and C, and our stormwater and our research and blah, blah, blah can prove this. Otherwise, the planning board has no information to go on, I'm just saying.
Devil's advocate side, devil's advocate side. Does, does the DEP and does the EPA allow you to build a junkyard? Because there's stormwater, there is stormwater, no matter where you build it, stormwater's an issue. And no matter where you build it, groundwater's an issue. So, it can successfully be designed, there's no doubt about it, there's regulations they have to follow, that, that can be done. There's, it would be more upon the town to say, well, we've got ten examples right in front of us where your projects have failed. So now you've gotta step up to the plate. But, you know, that would be a different story. But other than that, you have, you'd have to say, the DEP regulations say you can deny this, and they don't. Nowhere does DEP or EPA say you can deny it. If you meet their criteria, you can do it.
Okay, so you're getting a little, we're like, I'm just using this as an example. So on every single project, what you're, you're recommending, and I don't know if I agree with this. You're recommending that we don't, the planning board does not require stormwater submission.
On their, on their initial.
After the planning board has already approved the project?
On their initial application. On their initial application, they don't need stormwater to be finalized. If they bring up conceptual drawings, blueprints, all those things, so you can see what, because that's the project, right? If you're building a, an apartment building.
But you didn't answer the question, do they have to?
I, I haven't got there, I haven't got there yet, give me a second, let me breathe.
You guys are fun to listen to.
You can, you can, you can bring the conceptuals, you can bring what the project is, okay? If the town says, okay, we believe that this might work, let's go to step two. We, now can you bring us your step water? I mean, your stormwater. Okay, now I've got the, we're, we got a fifty fifty chance, you know, we got a more than, we're not getting turned down. The project, the, the town likes it, now let's bring the stormwater. And let, then they can bring full plans, and if the better job they do, the less they're gonna have to change on a peer review, so they better do a good job. And, and then, but, but you can always, the, the, my point is, you can never turn down a project because of stormwater, because you can always develop it. The, the regulations say you can do it. You know what I mean? It's not a deniable project. It might be harder in certain areas than other areas, but there's nothing in the, in the act that says you can deny any project because of stormwater.
So you're suggesting, Rich, really more of a face?
So you suggesting it's really more of a phased approach?
Yeah, come, yeah, phased approach, get, let, you know, rather than say somebody's gonna spend twenty-five or thirty thousand dollars off the bat. A lot of guys are gonna say, well, I'm not taking that risk because, you know, but. Let, you know, let, let's test the waters, let's open, I don't mean bring a crayon sketch, you know, you can, you should demand. A set of plans where you've got scaled drawings, elevations, and, and you know. That part of it should be pretty much done, you know what I mean? That, they know what they're gonna build, bring me what you're ready to build tomorrow. As far as the, the fine parts about stormwater, those, like I say, you can't deny it because of it, you know what I mean? It's, it's a, it's a, it might be a hell of a lot harder on other projects than, than, than other projects because of the land. And that might be a cost benefit that they don't wanna swallow. And, and in their case, they'd have to pull out because then they wouldn't meet the regulations. But, you know what I mean, let them phase at least the stormwater part of it. The rest of it should be, you know, pretty well detailed, they shouldn't bring a crayon set of plans to the town. Right, um, you know what I mean, but.
So, why, the, so instead of applying, initially applying for a special permit. Why doesn't the applicant just come to a, just get themselves on the agenda? In like a discussion mode, and say, here's what we're thinking?
Well, because it's not on the record.
Well, of course it's on the record.
It's not official here, I mean, would you say, yeah, we'd like it, we, you know, there's enough here to entertain you, we'd, we'd like to entertain it? It's some, I, I think you gotta be, I, I think it's gotta be fair to the applicant that you gotta, you gotta give them a. You know, yeah, this looks like something we'd like to do in town or we don't wanna do it, you know what I mean? You, before they spend too much money, you know what I mean? It's not fair to, you, you gotta be fair to the applicant on that side. And, and that's the problem with solar guys, they didn't give a crap, they were getting it, so they just brought, fed us crap and there was nothing much we could do about it, you know what I mean?
Well, okay.
I mean, go ahead, Joyce, go ahead.
I was just gonna say that, um, the last couple of solar projects that came before us, the town, were special permit. And so, what you're saying would apply to them, and no, they didn't do their test pits, and no, they didn't, uh, really submit legitimate stormwater. And what you're saying is that that is probably appropriate because the town should have looked at its merits without the stormwater.
The, the, that special permit didn't mean the paper it was written on.
Yeah, did it?
No, it didn't, what did it mean? You couldn't deny it for any more than you could deny it under by right, you could deny by right for the same reasons.
Oh, it was the first special permit? Yeah, okay.
You know, I mean, our bylaws is a different story, but the first special permit was really nothing different than the by right.
Right, it was the exact same thing, sure.
You know what I mean, so that's what I was saying, those guys just fed us crap because they, they were, they were getting it. And they argued left and right with us, and we couldn't say, but in this case, if you brought them in. And said, okay, yeah, we like every, you know, I don't mean they, they get in here scot-free, you gotta have a set of plan, which is not a cheap. You know, to have an engineer design built, you might not have all the textual's all done, which you're spending a fair amount of money. And then. Then you go to the stormwater, that, they could be denied if they don't meet the stormwater. You know what I mean, at that point, they could be denied, and they've got quite a bit of money in, into the project, so then you'd say, okay, well. Our, you know, cause our period you guys says you don't meet the stormwater, so you have to meet the stormwater to get this project done. That's, that's a given, that's a regulation they have to meet.
Yeah, go ahead, Derek.
I, I agree with Jo- with Joyce and Rich, uh, to a some point. Um, all depends on the size of the project, on the magnitude. I think if there's a client with a good project, and he does his proposal. And comes in, oh, the stormwater is, is very expensive, I acknowledge that. So I'm gonna ask for a waiver. And apply, and the waiver will be, well, I have my project, but I wanna know if it's feasible or not. Without spending any money on the, on the stormwater, can I apply for the permit?
Nice.
That's a good idea.
That's a good compromise.
Very good, very good.
That's why we have the waiver box on there, you just gotta give a reason.
Yeah.
And I, I agree with Derek, I, I agree with Rich, it's. Sometimes if it's, if it's not a huge thing, like it's a, a, a small business. You, you don't wanna do everything, you wanna know first, would anybody even listen to me? And, you know, sometimes that's all they want, they just wanna know, can I, can I try?
I, I agree with a lot, a lot of what's being said, and I, I think there should be a phased approach. Um, and, and Mr. Fidgel's concern too. Um, we don't wanna be driving out businesses. You know, we want that tax revenue in the town, we wanna be able to allow businesses to come to the town. And, you know, do their thing. Um, safely. Um, and we wanna make sure that they're done appropriately. Uh, but we don't wanna pass something. That makes it so difficult that a business is just not gonna look at our town at all. Because it's not gonna be lucrative to them, they, they're gonna dump. Hundreds of thousands of dollars before they. Even get to see us. And I could understand the concern, um, with many businesses out there. Um, I don't know if, John, if that's what you were looking at?
It is, yeah, I, I just didn't wanna see people just saying, oh, if, if I gotta do all this before I put an application in. Uh, I'm gonna go somewhere else because. You know, it's just gonna be easier or, or whatever, you know, um, you can't spend, you know, say a hundred thousand dollars to see if a project's gonna work and then. Denied for whatever reason, it, it just wouldn't make, is the sense, no, do it.
Now, would you have a recommendation?
Well, I like both, I like both ideas, the phase idea, that's, that's great. Um, just submitting an application, uh, very simply, uh, which is the proposed project I would like to do. They should have a, a good set of plans, they don't need all of these specifics, I mean, um, there's a lot of things you could waive here. Um, that would just, like, like I say, let the town entertain the idea for kicking around between the planning board and whoever else may be involved in the project. And, and see if it is feasible to do. And, and then at which point, um, okay, if you'd like to continue with this proj- project, we will entertain it, and here's what we'd like from you. Um, to meet our guidelines before moving forward with any project like this, you know? So- something like that would, would probably work.
And, and I, I, I wanna let all the members know, um, Joyce keyed on something that's very important here. We're all a little shell shocked from all these. The solar really came in. Did, did a number between the law groups, the shoddy craftsmanship, the damage that's been going on. Um, with all the water runoff. Um, there, there's a lot of things that are going on with those projects. So, we're looking to prevent that and protect the town and the residents.
And that's very understandable, I mean, well, once you've been shot two or three times, um, you're gonna be a little gun shy next time, absolutely. Um, but I'm just saying that, that a smaller guy that may wanna commute a small building up. To sell fruits and vegetables, say for example, what, why would he wanna do a, a, a watershed? Or, or a stormwater runoff? Spend all kinds of money to, you know, put his building up and have a parking lot in his, in his garage before applying for this permission to do so. You know, that's, that's kinda what.
Yeah, I agree with, I agree with, uh, John Fidgel and David. I think we can work this out in phases and also. You know, specifying the basic application. Regardless if it's a, a small project, medium project, or large project. And then, so, but they also should know if your project moves forward, be aware of this is all what we need.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay, so, so there'd be a few things on here that we'd wanna, if you're gonna do a special permit. Your application has to have, like, I think a narrative. It's gotta have at least like existing conditions, right? So there's gonna be a handful of things on here for like step one, right, phase one or whatever.
Right.
And then, if the town moves ahead. Um, and the applicant moves ahead, then we can say, okay, now you got, you gotta look at these other dozen things. So maybe it could be a mutual kinda discussion, it's like, well, you, you, you're gonna have to do stormwater, and you're gonna have to do a traffic study. You're gonna have to do, you know, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah.
I guess that.
We have to be flexible at the same time to, you know. The package has to be reasonable. If, if I'm gonna, if I'm gonna put a, a McDonald's with a big M, you know, and. Just for that. And how it's gonna look like from the other side of the road, then we don't, we don't have the power to. Say, oh, we like it, we don't like it, we, could you do this, could you do that? So I, I think. Uh, if we create a basic application that, you know, for, for each project. Uh, containing everything that we required. And noting that all the things that it could, we could possibly ask for if the project goes on.
Yeah.
So, like, it's, it is really the phased project in a lot of ways, like a phased.
Yeah.
So the only thing that I, um. See problematic with this, and I don't really see a problem is, is, um, but ultimately. The planning board can't, even with a special permit, is not allowed to say no unless it doesn't meet. The guidelines of the special permit, you know, the restrictions at the special permit, I mean, there is no. There is no no, if somebody comes to town and says, I have this project, it's allowed in this district. I'm meeting all the criteria of your board and of the state requirements and federal requirements. The planning board can't say no. Right?
No, we can't, we can't say no, we decide the use of the land.
So you can't just say, so if somebody comes in with a project, that's just a.
Let me, let me put it in.
Can't say, uh, like McDonald's and Burger King can't come in here, you can't say something like that.
You can't just say, well, they can't come into town because they're not allowed because we have a bylaw that says. Fast food or something or other.
Right.
But some other things that want to be brought to town, we can't say no to because our bylaws simply allow it. Unless.
Right, but we have to put everything on a, on a balance and see how good it does to the town and what. Not good with, to the town. I have a dozens of examples where I have been applying for permits and I have been denied. For reasonable reasons. So that's what the, the planning board has the power to deny because of something logical, reasonable tangent.
Right. But it has to be. You know, something that the bylaw, you know, somebody's doing something that is counter to what the bylaw says.
Well, with health and safety, commitment to play?
Yes.
Yes.
Health and safety, if it's detrimental to any of those. Um, we could deny.
Right, so I mean, eh, eh, you know, like even the junkyard, you know what I mean, if. They would have to prove, you know, they, by meeting all of the federal and, and state regulations, I guess that would be their approval. But if you guys had. Evidence of something that, that went counter to that, then that would be a reason something like that could be turned down. So I guess things can be turned down, you know, that, that everything's not automatic, so.
No, it's not automatic, but.
Back to like, unlike the solar guys that were just automatic, and that, I guess that's my main difference that I've been trying to bring up is, you know.
Prove health, life, and safety. Um, is one of the over and over that was put out to us.
Is that, is, yeah. Okay, yep.
Yeah, it was, we had to show that there was some sort of health, life, and safety. For the denial, but there was also a lot of other elf contributing factors that could be in there, say. They didn't meet stormwater, they didn't do this, but we couldn't just sit there and say. Well, your stormwater's not good enough, because like you said, Rich, incorrect it. But when it's so gross and egregious, like we've seen with some of those projects that. You, you just can't, they just not gonna fix it, they're not willing to fix it, you know, when we give, we give somebody several times. To meet with us and correct it, and they're just not doing that. Then we have no other option, you know, they're just not gonna.
And, and, and that could be a pitfall of, of getting it upfront. You know, I mean, if you got the stormwater front like we do with the solar guys, they just fight tooth and nail and say, no, we're not changing it. You know what I mean, and if you do kind of phase it in, you can tell them your expectations, you know what I mean? Say, you know, we're gonna, we expect you to follow it to the T, including even, you know, the little stuff that you guys don't do. You know what I mean, and then, then they know before they even design it that they gotta do it, and if they don't, then it's, it's grounds for denial.
So at what point do they do the test pits? Do, do they do their test pits after?
Well, they would do it once, you know, once they go to the next phase, they're gonna do their thing, then they'd have to schedule with the planning board when they're gonna do it and have somebody there and all that things. And it might be, you might be able to get a, keep a better handle on it than the way it is now. You know, cause now, they just do it and then they just submit it, you know what I mean, nobody knows. You know, they've, you know?
Right.
One, one thing also we were trying to avoid with this checklist is having the planning board design the project. So making the applicant come in, like, here's the kind of stuff we need, have the applicant come in with a complete. I mean, I understand your arguments now, but with a complete application. Where every meeting, we're, you know, so we're not going back and forth every meeting saying, oh, you know, now you need this, now you need that.
Oh, absolutely, right, phase one, you're gonna have this at phase one, and then. You know, that, and, and if they don't, then you just hand it back to them, right, go back, you don't have phase one.
Yeah, I mean, we should be able to deny a project based on being incomplete too.
Absolutely, 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 absolutely.
Rich, I think we could actually do that, like you're saying, do it as a phase. It's also gonna be much more, um, transparent for an applicant too. Because gonna see right there what they, what we're expecting of them. Um, I think some of the confusion and frustration with applicants. Is, um, the process. Um, we need to be much more clear what we're gonna expect. And at what point we're gonna expect it.
Right, and I don't think you're designing it, you're just, you've met the next step and then say, okay, now go do this, but. You know, make sure you meet all these parts of it and go do it, you're not designing, you tell them, you know, don't forget, you gotta follow it to a, you know, you gotta follow all of it. Right, and, and, and they're gonna come back and then you peer review it, and if, and if, if they missed it. I guess you give them one shot to fix it, and then they, then they get denied in the next step. You know, then you know how serious they are.
That'd be good.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you, John, for your input, by the way.
My pleasure, thank you for listening.
Okay, so. With the other documents, I guess this, this needs a little work too.
Actually, it's not bad, you just need to put in like phase one and phase two.
Yeah, I think, well, you have to decide what's phase one and phase two, right? But yeah, like, what's the most important things we want upfront?
I, I would probably say there should probably be three phases. There should be phase one, the initial meet and greet, this is my project, this is what I wanna do, these are rough plans of what we wanna do. They, yeah, okay, looks like it's something, it, it does fit within our bylaws. Proceed to phase two, they go to phase two, they do the stormwater, all the other more detailed, um, items, they're more costly items. We go through that. We have our peer review look at it. And then we can go to phase three, which would be a final phase. And either the approval or the denial of the, um, permit overall. Um, but at least it gives somebody. A layered approach. Um, so they understand where they are in the, the process. Cause if they can't get it, uh, get out of phase one, which some of these solar companies should never have gotten out of the phase one. Um, there's problems.
Yep, I agree.
Okay. Alright, so, um. Go ahead, David.
Does, does anybody else have any input on that?
No, I think, I think the three phases is a good idea, I mean, you're right, you want someone to come in and be able to say, okay, what do I need to start with? And then where do we go, and yeah, so I think that's the best way to do it. And Richie, I think some of this stuff is fairly straightforward, that, yeah, these things need to be in the basic and, yeah, I think that's fairly easy.
And I agree totally.
All right, so, um, one, one more thing, John, as a man, Mr. Fidgel? I, would you see that as being something that's practical, having three phases?
I think it's a great idea, um, at least you know, at the end of each phase where you stand, what needs to be met to be able to move on to the next phase. Um, it, it gives you a, a better understanding of whether it's acceptable, but you already know it's, it's an acceptable use or, by, by the bylaws. But whether you. But whether you, the town would support it, the town would entertain the thought of this going there. Just kinda run it by everybody and see what everybody thinks before moving on with the project. Um, spending a whole bunch of money for it to get shot down in the end, it seems like, uh, you know, it's a. I I'm not even gonna go try it for that, I'm not gonna try to put my application in because, you know, I have to spend X amount of dollars in order to do that. It, this this phase idea sounds like a great idea, and, yeah, I mean, uh, if you wanted me to work with you sometime, um, trying to put this together. Being on this side of it, I know, I know you guys had problems with solar, and I don't know the every story of of every solar project that went in. And I, from what I understand, most of it was just a horror show anyway. But, um, from from standing on the other side of the fence, trying to develop something, um, I I mean, I I'd be more than happy to sit down with you. And shed some light on what I think while you're going through the phase, you know, process, making up the phases, and I think you're on the right track, for sure.
I I think that that was definitely helpful, and, you know, being a local businessman and knowing that the system, just like yourself with Rich Demetrius. You guys are working the streets with this, you're 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 out there doing these projects. So knowing that and helping us, we all can work together. And something that's not so restrictive that we're forcing the businesses out. But also make sure that we're protecting the town and the residents. Along with the applicant also, because if a shoddy application, things get missed. That sets them up to future lawsuits, um, and other things going on for themselves. So it's all to protect everybody in the end.
Absolutely, I agree.
Yeah, I think John and David are completely right. John, you have a great point. Clients really wanna know if something will block or not, it's better to know in advance. Uh, you know, wasting any money on this, but put in somewhere else. So you got really good points, and I think we can work around together.
Great, great. I look forward to it.
Okay, so I think, um, Derek and I are working on this document, so maybe what we'll do is we'll take a stab at the next revision. And then, um. I guess we'll go from there. Either have another meeting or maybe run it, we could run it by John and Richard too, I don't, you know, however we wanna do it. Um, but I guess Derek. The next step will be Derek and I to kind of figure out, okay, what are we gonna do here?
And after that, I think we can have another meeting like this and share with everybody and have everybody's feedback.
How long guys can actually pull it together? Is it two weeks enough?
Oh, yeah.
More to follow, thinking two weeks about it?
Yeah. I mean, the most, most of it's here, it's just a matter of like kind of reformatting and massaging.
Yeah.
And and this, this is a procedural thing, so it doesn't, it's not. As rigorous, I guess, as making a bylaw change. You know, we don't have to go through this huge process. This is something that we can adopt. Yeah, pretty easily and pretty quickly once we all settle on something, so.
Okay. Anything else, guys?
Um, one quick thing, I I signed in late. Did anybody talk about, um, taking that wording out about. Giving the ZBA the authority to make use changes?
Oh, no, you know, I forgot to mention that.
So I, I have it, I have it in front of me, it's section five point two, the variances.
Well, well, let me just throw the background in here, so what we were worried about with the recent ZBA ruling. Um, although the, uh, variance was denied. The fact that the variance was actually looking for a change in in the zoning for the property in question. So, um, and Richard pointed out that we need to change it so that you can't do a variance. And change the zoning.
Change usage.
Usage, but effectively making a zoning change for one piece of property. So, if. I don't know, Ed wants to put a solar farm in his backyard, right?
I wouldn't even think of it.
But now he goes to the ZBA and says, hey, I'd like to really do this, I can make a bunch of money, and the ZBA says, yeah, sure, go ahead, you can have a. A solar site in your backyard, and boom, so there's, you know, the usage has changed. For his property where it wasn't allowed before, so. I think that was one of Richard's, um.
It had, it had to go to a town vote to change the bylaw, yet the ZBA had the authority to go against the town vote on their. They had it without the town's input.
Basically override the will of the town meeting.
So we're looking at doing a bylaw to prevent that?
No, no, if you read the, I don't know if you have it, Rich, it's section five point two, I can read it real quick.
Yeah, go ahead.
It says, the Board of Appeals shall have the power to hear and decide appeals or petitions for variances for the terms of this bylaw. Comma, including variances of use. Well, I think you just take out the, that section, including variances of use. And then go, then it says, with respect to particular land, buildings, and structures, such variances shall be granted only in cases where the Board of Appeals finds the following. So typically, it, like, if it's a setback requirement, like, I wanna build a shed and it's too close to the, to the property, to the boundaries. Well, the shed, it, I I have the ability to, on my piece of property, to put a shed, it's zoned correctly, I just can't put it. I gotta be twenty feet instead of ten, and I don't have room, so I want a variance on the setback requirement. Well, that's what the ZBA should be hearing. But not that I want something completely, they shouldn't be changing the zoning bylaw. And actually, the Mass General Law is actually backing up, they say, you, you know, they say that, uh, it has to go back to the town unless you put this wording in. So you can take this wording out.
There was also, um, the the need to maybe, um. Go back to the Mass General Law language for the definition of special permit and the length of time. Our current bylaw has language that, um. Is confusing, and it, um, and it sounds as if. That we wouldn't allow the clock to stop if somebody was appealing a special permit, which it needs to stop. And then, um, we don't really have a clear definition around, um. The length of time, although we do, there's still some language in it that's a little confusing, so I think that should perhaps be cleared up a little bit. Mass General Law language is pretty clear, and most people just use that in their bylaw. I don't know why ours was changed to be more confusing than Mass General Law.
So, and then the other thing that goes along with that is we don't have a very good definition of substantial use. Um, the the permit can expire unless there's substantial use of the land or however it's defined, but we don't really. Talk about what that is. Actually, Drew had something in. Also mentioned that, I think, in the wind turbine, I can't find it, it's nine pages, the wind turbine bylaw too.
I remember that wording and and the question on what is that?
Yeah, what is substantially used? We need to probably head up to create a better definition.
Just to define.
All right.
So it looks like we have a few things that we need to work out.
Yes, yeah.
Think we, um, continue to the next meeting, unless you have something else?
Well, we just got a few other items on the agenda that we should take care of. Uh, but I guess for now, we're done with this discussion, I think, right? Is everybody?
Yeah.
Just talked out?
Talked out for now.
It was good, good discussion.
Good discussion. It was. Thank you guys for doing this.
Yes, thank you very, thank you very much.
And, um.
Participating, it's definitely valuable to have everybody's insight into different perspectives.
Yes, indeed.
So can I throw something out that is probably not on the agenda, but, um, as a conservation person, I wanna throw this out? Seaboard Solar is starting their project in Westbrook Field. Up by you, David. And, um, Westbrook Field is meeting on the site with the Site Super or somebody. Uh, I was invited to go to the meeting, uh, by somebody in Westbrook Field. I don't know if somebody from the planning board would like to go as well, but I'm just throwing it out there.
When is the meeting?
Uh, Wednesday at at three o'clock. And it's really close to your house.
I'm sorry. Can anybody else come?
I I can't make it Wednesday, no.
Rich?
Um, I'll go if nobody else can.
Yeah, I'm at work, so.
I I might be able to go, but I'm not really, I really have to look at my calendar, but between Rich and I, we can decide.
Okay.
How's that?
And and I did talk to, um, T E C about monitoring on the Warren part of the project and then on board.
Oh, and Westbrook Field, um, is interested in talking to Tech Two, so they're interested in just having one. Uh, monitor, I don't know how the div- division is gonna go, but can you, um, send me the. Tech information and I'll forward it to.
Yep.
Alright.
Kathy, uh, did you get a hold of, or did Tech get a hold of you or anything? I haven't seen an email.
From Tech for what?
Oh, to, um, he was gonna send like an initial invoice to do the meeting and then a contract to do the monitoring. Like once.
No.
Uh, okay, I mean, it was the holidays, so.
Right, what did he, um, include in the contract? I mean, how does he know?
Well, I think it's like just a blanket contract for monitoring, I don't know, I don't know what he did. They they've done it before, so he was gonna, he was gonna do an, an invoice for attending the construction, pre-construction meeting. And then, um, like I said, a blanket contract for monitoring, which would be one or two times a week.
I have language that we use for, um. Or, uh, Quay Hill. You know, just as a, um, scope of project, the scope of work.
Yeah, let me check with them and see, cause that was.
Or he can give it and then we can agree and just say, this is what we want, and conservation has to be in there too, because we have, um. Erosion control specialist.
All right, why don't you just send me what you have?
Built in, so we would just want that added to.
Yeah, so. Send me what you have and then, um, I'll send it to him. I'll I'll call him tomorrow.
And yeah, and then just send me his email and then.
So Kathy, they wanted to be present at the, um, pre-construction meeting.
Hmm, okay.
He said that's important for them to s- to to be there, since they're gonna be monitoring, they wanna know what the project's about.
I'm gonna send out an email tomorrow to set one up, so I'll put everybody on the email. Um, we're probably looking for Thursday or Friday, I believe that's what, um, the new building inspector can do. Would have to be after three thirty, cause I can't be here before that.
Okay.
That sounds good to me. Will you put me on it too, Kathy?
I sure will.
Thank you.
So if we're gonna do it in person, we can't have more than ten, so other, we're we're gonna have to set up a Zoom.
Okay.
I don't.
Well, let's see how many we get. How many people, you know, and then we'll decide then.
Okay. Sounds good.
Okay, sounds great, thank you.
Thank you very much. So, moving on, um, do we have a motion for item number four, please?
I motion to pay Kathy's up for the amount of three hundred and twenty dollars and sixty cents.
Second.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Need a motion, um, on item number five?
I motion to approve the invoice for Robertson Ludlow Printing in the amount of ninety dollars and eighty-five cents.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Um, do we have other business?
I don't think so, right? I think we just went through other business.
In that case, um, we need to, uh, date for the next. Meeting. So, David, you said we will have this in two weeks? To the eighteen?
Rich, Ed, you be able to get this all set for for two weeks?
Oh, it's MLK Day. Do we need to do a different day?
Yep, it's a federal holiday.
Okay. Up in the twenty, twenty-fifth, we have Copart.
Could we do it on a Tuesday night? Or another night during the week?
Tuesday's fine by me, I don't know about.
Tues- Tuesday's okay with me too.
So Tuesday, the nineteenth?
Nineteenth.
Do it, be it Zoom again?
Yeah, yeah.
Excellent.
So in the next item, could you have a motion for for number eight?
I motion to adjourn.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thanks, folks.
Thank you.
Okay, goodbye.
Bye.
Have a good night.